Meeting will come to order, please rise for their pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
House Member Ervey.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
Move approval of journal meeting of August 30, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say that motion carries, journal is approved, we have no bid opening, it's moved to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters, under road and bridge matters, item number one, sixth district.
Receive file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say that motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair, item number one, all districts.
Receive file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three, second district.
Receive file, and the replacement deposit agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say that motion carries.
Item number four, third district.
Receive and file.
It's ordered.
Item number five, seventh district.
Receive file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
It's ordered.
Item number six.
Same motion for items six, seven, and eight, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, seventh district.
Receive file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and same motion for item 10 as well.
It's ordered.
Item number 11, fifth and sixth districts.
Receive file, contract an amount not to exceed $652,716.75, be approved in order to group construction company, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say that motion carries.
Item number 12, all districts.
Receive file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, sixth district.
Receive file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
It's ordered.
Item number 14, first district.
Same motion.
It's ordered.
Item number 15, sixth district.
Receive file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say that motion carries.
Item number 16, sixth district.
Receive file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say that motion carries.
Item number 17, sixth district.
Receive file, and the liquor license be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say that motion carries.
Item number 18.
Receive file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Add-ons, please.
Item number one, all districts.
Receive file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three, sixth district.
Receive file, and refer to the planning commission.
It's ordered. Let me explain what that is, for those that have been here for several weeks regarding bill number 180, the petitioner has asked for a formal request to withdraw from this particular project, and what that does, it takes it out of the council's hand, it goes back to the planning commission. So, we appreciate your coming out here for several weeks, and we'll wait for the report back from the planning commission before the council takes any further action on this, so.
Just, we made an attempt, didn't find us out till late in the afternoon, so I know we made an attempt to reach out to some people, so you do know, we did make an attempt to try to tell some people not, you know, to save them a trip for coming tonight, but I don't know how, well, the word got out, seemed to get out pretty good when they, the other way around, but there was an attempt made by some of us.
Come on, come on.
That's why we reached out to those who we could.
It was a last, it was a last-minute letter that came in, and so we put it on the, and there was a council member that put out an email, but it wasn't till probably you were already on the road, and so tried to make an attempt, and that's all he was trying to say.
I personally talked to some people, and they appreciated it, and said they were going to spread the word as best they could, actually somebody lives on by our road, so.
All right. At this time, reported County Executive.
Dr. President.
No special committees, we have several speakers here this evening, we're going to keep your comments to one minute, and we, Jen, we'll start with, and if you can, we've All right, Jen, we'll state your name, and then the next person in line to speak, so if you could be ready after that first speaker, and like I said, please keep your comments to one minute, and we'll move this thing along, so first speaker.
First speaker this evening is Mary Schaefer, followed by Robert Mensey.
Thank you, I did not know it would be such a popular meeting, so I'm really glad to be here, because I'm Mary Schaefer, the Director of Mid East Area Agency on Aging. We work with seniors, about 40,000 in this four county area, we assist people to stay in their own homes and health, honor, and dignity where they would like to live. One of our programs is Meals on Wheels, and we've run into some difficulty recently because we have a growing aging population, number one, number two, the cost of providing meals is increasing exponentially, fortunately, gas is down right now, but other costs such as personnel and other items have increased, so it's creating a bit of a crisis. Senior hunger is a hidden problem in this country and in this area, one in seven seniors suffers from food insecurity, meaning they really don't know where their next meal is going to come from, so we really are addressing this issue with our Big Wheels for Meals. So this evening, County Executive Steve Sanger recognized three outstanding leaders who are helping us with this problem, John Beck, General Manager of Emma's Communications, who I believe is here tonight, we are working with John Sheehan, General Manager of CBS Radio, and John Sandag, AT&amp;T President of Missouri, for their willingness, we want to thank them, for their willingness to help raise awareness and funding to help stamp out senior hunger in our community, so vulnerable seniors will be able to have the meals that they really need. So we'd like to thank them for serving as honorary chairs for our 2017 Big Wheels for Meals campaign, we want to thank them. Thanks to our cheering section, and we also want to thank County Executive Sanger, who has actually delivered meals, and I know a few of you may have had the opportunity, but I hope you will take the opportunity, if you get a chance, to do that, and I think you really realize what an important program it is.
Mary, your one minute is well up.
Darn, but thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Mensey, Mr. Mensey's not here, Dennis Poole, followed by Michael Lim, or Kim?
Yes, Dennis isn't here, my name's Dr. Michael Lim, I'm the Chief of Cardiology at St. Louis University, and I also serve as the Board President for the American Heart Association of St. Louis, I'm here in favor of having the council members vote to pass the Tobacco 21 issue in front of you today, understanding that there is no perfect way to legislate tobacco cessation within our community or our country, but let's be very clear about a couple different things, the absence of proof of harm is not the same as a proof of safety. Vaping, although not been proven to be harmful, has not been proven to be safe, what it has been proven to do in our young adults is to increase the rate of tobacco use, what it hasn't been able to be associated with is it has not been able to be associated with a tool to be used to quit smoking in our young adults from 18 to 21 years of age. I urge you to lead, to vote positive legislation, and to pass this tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Next speaker is Adam Bizon or Bellzon, followed by Alex Carcello.
Hello, my name's Adam Berzon, I live in the St. Louis County District, and I am here to support vapor products, I am not to support smoking cigarettes, you know, at least until age of 21, if you want to make it that way, that's fine, but you have to understand that people are considered an adult at the age of 18, they can vote at the age of 18. This is Missouri State Law 407.925, number 11, tobacco products, any substance containing tobacco leaf, including not but limited to cigarettes, cigars, pipe tobacco, snuff, chewing tobacco, and dipping tobacco, but does not include alternative nicotine products or vapor products, Missouri State Law. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me and all the other people.
Thanks, Adam.
Mr. Chair, can we ask the speaker to spell his last name, please?
Berzon, B-E-R-Z-O-N.
B-E-R-Z, thank you very much. Next speaker is Alex Carcello, followed by Amanda, maybe Lynn?
Hi, my name is Alex Carcello, I'm a Wash U student, and just wanted to say that I'm here in support of the Tobacco 21 legislation, thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Amanda will be followed by Cory Knowles. Mr. Chair, again, if the speaker could spell her name.
Hello, my name's Amanda M., and I am a student at Washington University, I'm here to advocate the passage of the Tobacco 21 policy. At my high school, there were three things you did when you turned 18, you bought your first lottery ticket, you got that tattoo that your parents disapproved of, and you bought your first cigarette, and a lot of my friends did that, and it seemed like a harmless thing enough, but buying your first cigarette can be the start of a hazardous lifestyle, and I'm 18, and a lot of my friends turned 18 this year, and I wish there had been a bill like this to prevent them from taking that first dangerous step, thank you.
Amanda, how do you spell your last name?
M. spelled I-M.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Cory Knowles, followed by Mallory Imothon.
Hello, my name's Cory Knowles, I'm here today in support of T-21 without vapor products, I'd like to say that the Royal College of Physicians on April 28, 2016, just four months ago, published a review called Nicotine Without Smoke, where they found that vaping is 95% safer than smoking traditional combustible cigarettes, matter of fact, the British government encourages that among smokers within their country. This is the same organization that, three years before the United States recognized the link between cigarettes and cancer, they were the first people to find that, they found the link, we were told, it took several years to come on board, what they say is serious, and I ask that you please take it into consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Next speaker is Mallory Imothon, followed by Bill Cramper.
Hi, my name's Mallory Imothon, I'm 20 years old, and I have quit smoking with the use of vapor products, I ask you today to exclude vapor products from the T-21 ordinance, thank you.
Thank you, Mallory.
Mr. Cramper, Mr. Hogan. The next speaker is Robert Schmidt, followed by Dawn Friedman.
Council members, my name is Robert Schmidt, and I live at 10058 Bauer Road, 63128. Council members, there is a problem with transparency in the meetings, minutes of the previous meeting, the summaries of our speeches were not included on page six, under the public forums section, in the minutes of the meeting, I called Ms. Jeanette Hook, Chief Deputy County Clerk, to find out when this would be amended, as I rely on a written record of the proceedings, since the voice recognition captioning on YouTube is wildly inaccurate, I invite you to go there and view that captioning for yourselves, it is rarely correct. According to the documentation on your website, it states categorically that, and I'm going to quote verbatim here, your comments, or a summary of your comments, as well as your name and address will be included in the meeting minutes. I reviewed the minutes of all meetings since January 5 of this calendar year, and never before had speakers been reduced to a list of names and addresses, however, Ms. Hook was adamant that she had no plan to rectify the situation. Council, as well as creating a communication barrier to me personally, this decision appears to have censored us by removing our voices of opposition to bill 180 from the official record. Transparency in local government has been compromised, replaced by what appears to be a self-serving bias to protect individual council members who support the bill, we want to avoid that appearance, I request our comments be included in that previous meeting's minutes, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note that Mr. Schmidt's conversation last Friday was with me, not with Ms. Hook.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you know why the comments were left out of the minutes?
Jen, we.
Yes, sir, frequently when we've had agenda items, legislation, that kind of thing that have stayed on the agenda for some period of time, and that we've had a large volume of speakers appearing each week to speak on that, and the either opposition to the legislation, or the support for the legislation has been very well documented, we will often then begin to, after some period of time, list a, put a list of speakers in the minutes, either speaking in favor of or in opposition to that particular item, because our, excuse me, because our interest is in getting out a record of the council's actions to the public and to the rest of county government as quickly as possible, and it was making it difficult for us to do that, so in situations where that comes up, we do sometimes, after there's been a lot, like I said, a lot of documentation of the opposition, we will go ahead and just put a list of speakers in opposition and in favor, the, again, the comments are not edited on the audio or videotapes of the meeting, they're there in full for anyone who would, who would want them, and that's really why we did that, so it is a practice we've done in the past, where we've had an item that has stayed on the agenda for some period of time with a lot of interest.
Thank you, Jen, next speaker, please.
Dawn Friedman, followed by Christine Applebaum. Christine Applebaum. Julia Mensey.
That's a barrier to Doug access, I'm sorry. Equal access, equal communication.
Ma'am.
And you're very, you're.
I understand, we're out of order there.
Ms. Mensey. Next speaker, Steve Antnick. Sarah Hartz. Ms. Hartz will be followed by Daniel Jufra.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
We're, they're in public speaking right now.
I just wish somebody would contact the gentleman and talk to him, or somebody could say something to him.
Jen has been in contact with.
But I mean, if he still has questions, I think somebody should follow up with him.
Jen did follow up with him.
Mike.
And he's just repeating what, he had the same conversation.
He apparently has some questions still, so I think it should be addressed, that's my opinion.
We just addressed it.
Has questions still.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Sarah Hartz, I'm an Assistant Professor of Psychiatry at Washington University, I'm here in support of bill number 199, I'm here mostly as a mother of a 12-year-old and a nine-year-old, as a clinical psychiatrist who treats many patients with addiction, and as an addiction researcher, although adolescents look like adults, similar to babies, their brains are developing rapidly into their twenties, and it's not surprising that it's bad to bathe a developing brain in addictive substances, therefore, the biggest risk factor for becoming an addict is early exposure to these substances, the best thing that we can do to protect our children is to restrict access to nicotine and other substances, so please vote in favor of bill 199, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next speaker is Daniel, I'm not sure how pronounced starts with a G, followed by, I think, David O'Sullivan.
Hi, everybody, my name is Daniel Jufra, I'm here representing Smoke Free St. Louis, like I said, last week I grew up in Chesterfield, went to high school in Ladue, and I'm currently a college senior at Washington University in St. Louis, I'm also a recognized Associate Substance Abuse Counselor of the State of Missouri, it has been the case for several years for those under the age of 18 to be able to use nicotine replacement therapy via doctor's prescription, under current Tobacco 21 laws, NRT, nicotine replacement therapy, and other medications for nicotine addiction have been available to people of adolescent age and above, the difference between a cessation device and a vape is a detailed evidence-based instruction coupled with counseling in some situations that has been proven a safe pathway away from addiction, we will hear about freedom and choice in the context of these products and their purchase tonight, and I urge you to consider those individuals who don't have the luxury of choosing whether or not they want to smoke, I'm here for those who currently still have that choice in order to protect it from being taken away by the addictive qualities of all tobacco products, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
David O'Sullivan, followed by Terry, and I think it starts with a D, but I'm, I can't read it.
Hello, my name is Dowo Sullivan, it's okay, I'm a senior at Washington University, I've been grateful to call St. Louis my home for three, going on four years now, and one thing that I've noticed as a student, looking at my peers, is that there are some students who choose to, once they're away from home, begin to smoke, or be, excuse me, to begin to vape as recreational activity, and then it turns into addiction by the time they're seniors, and I would strongly, strongly urge you guys to, within your power tonight, to vote to make that no longer an avenue for my peers, thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if the speaker could spell his last name for us.
D-O-N-A-H-O.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight, on October 13, 2005, I raised my right hand to defend the rights of this country, and for those who live in this country, I spent nine years and served 12 months in Iraq, you may ask what that has to do with today's meeting, a cigarette contains over 400 known chemicals and carcinogens that harm the body, vaping is known to have four, to take away the right of smoking and vaping for, you know, adults at the age of 18, 19, and 20, they will find a means of getting this, just like they do for any alcohol or anything else, so, how many small businesses and tax dollars will be lost if you make this decision to raise the age to 21? What happened to the American dream of building a successful company and supporting the families to do so, they're being taken away because of decisions like this, I ask you please to vote against this, for not only the health of our adults, but the families that will be hurting if you do vote on passing the law, so I close with this, if being able to choose to fight for our country at the age of 18, then you should be able to choose at the age of 18 to vape, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chair.
Next speaker is A.J. Green, followed by John Burns.
Terry, thank you for serving.
Hello, my name's A.J. Green, and I'm 20 years old, today I actually drove four hours from Joplin, Missouri, to speak to you today, I started smoking when I was 14 years old, I started out by stealing from my parents' cigarettes every single day, by the time I was 17, I started smoking two packs a day, when I was able to turn 18 and purchase a vapor product, I almost immediately quit smoking, these health benefits of choosing an alternative have been proven time and time again that people my age can quit smoking, and either way, even if you raise the age to 21, people my age are still going to find ways to get cigarettes, vaping can save these people, they can keep people my age from smoking, people have, at my age, have their own right to choose between smoking or vaping, thank you.
Thank you, A.J.
Mr. Burns, will be followed by Julie Roark.
I just wanted to read a quote from the Director of the FDA, Mitch Zeller, "If we could get all those people who smoke to completely switch all of their cigarettes to non-combustible cigarettes, it would be good for public health," he continued, "We have been given an opportunity to make a serious dent in death and disease toll, now that we can regulate vapor products," Zeller says, "Let's not lose our focus on what the primary cause is for those 480,000 avoidable deaths each year, it's primarily burning combustible cigarettes," and that's a fact, that's coming from the FDA that's dropped all this unreasonable regulation on us, and I'm not sure if St. Louis doesn't have access to the Royal College of Physicians studies, but they may want to take a few minutes to study what they found out about vaping, that it's actually 95% safer than smoking, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Julie Roark, will be followed by Ronald Roark.
Roark, but, I, I live in St. Louis County, I, I've lived here my whole life, I love living in St. Louis, and I wanted to thank each councilman that called me back, or women that called me back, I really appreciate you guys, and, being a business owner in St. Louis, you know, you, it means a lot to us, and when you have the smoking that people, it's not good, we get that, you know, it causes cancer, my grandfather died from it, I used to steal cigarettes from my dad, we get it, it's not good, but vaping, we're seeing that it's saving people's lives, I see people that come in, excuse me, they come into the shop, and they're like, you know, when you first see them, they're carrying their oxygens, and they're, you know, they're hacking, and they're like, this is what I want to do, to see my grandkids grow up, to see my, you know, to see the next generation, and then months down the road, you see them, you're like, where's your oxygen, oh, I don't need it anymore, because I can breathe, I can finally do it, my father in the wheelchair, you're going to see him come up, he is the leading example of how this saves people's lives, that helps people that are older live extra, that adds extra onto their lives, so please, if, if I can't get this council to understand, then my vote goes to Amy Polk next, because this council needs to understand that vaping does save people's lives, and thank you for your very time.
And Ronald Roark, will be followed by Heather Ryankey.
Hi, my name is Ronald Roark, I started smoking in 1974 at the age of 14, I served in the US Army from. I served in the U.S. Army from 1979 to 1986. In 2011, I was still smoking. I was diagnosed with severe COPD and emphysema. I was putting on two inhalers. Also, I was putting on a nebulizer and oxygen. Doctor told me if I didn't quit smoking, I had two to six months to live. And that was four years ago. The day I got my vapor product, I put cigarettes down. I have not touched one since. It is the vapor product that saved my life. And please, don't take this away from our young adults that are trying to quit smoking and use vapor products. They need it. Please, that's all I got to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Heather Rinkey will be followed by Danny Rinkey.
Councilmembers, my name is Heather Rinkey. I actually just wanted to say a few things in regards to a lot of things that have already been said, but I wanted to reiterate. Royal College of Physicians in 1962 told our U.S. government that tobacco cigarettes were causing cancer and going to kill people. Nobody listened. Nobody listens to the Royal College of Physicians. Still today, nobody is listening to the Royal College of Physicians when they say that smoking is 5% I'm sorry, I'm going to say this all wrong, because I am very nervous. This isn't obvious. That vaping is 95% safer than smoking cigarettes. There was also a new study put out by Roswell Park Cancer Institute. The source is Roswell Park Cancer Institute. They're a very world-renowned place as well. The study measured urine levels of 17 biomarkers of tobacco smoke exposure in 20 adult smokers before and after they switched. The decline in toxin levels was similar to the decline seen among tobacco users who absolutely quit smoking. This was just put out a couple of days ago. So I'm sure that a lot of these professionals here will be talking about that in the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Next speaker is Danny Rinkey, followed by Michael Doian.
Hello, my name is Danny Rinkey. I'm here in support of the change for the exemption of vapor products for T-21. In 2014, the Missouri Legislature set a minor sales ban on vapor products of special interest groups, including the Cancer Society, Heart Association, Lung Association, Missouri Academy of Physicians, Tobacco-Free Kids, and the Tobacco-Free Missouri, actually lobbied against an age restriction. Why do these special interest groups now want to be at odds with state and federal law? It's because Big Pharma products, they push including nicotine gum and packages. As those sales declined, and people no longer have the opportunity to try these products, you know, I've seen them save lives. I've watched people literally walk into our doors and walk out, just like the lady was saying earlier, without using their oxygen tanks anymore. It's been an amazing journey, and please don't take that away from those people.
Thank you, Danny.
Next speaker is Michael Doian, followed by Rob Crane. Michael Doian, okay. Rob Crane, followed by Ginny Chadwick.
Good evening, Chairman and members of council. I'm Rob Crane. I'm a family physician and professor of family medicine at Ohio State University in Columbus, Ohio. I'm also the, one of the national chairs of the Tobacco 21 movement across the country. As you're aware, we're up at 192 cities so far. If you pass this tonight, you'd be the 193rd city or county which has done so. I'm here as a reminder of why you're doing this, and a thank you. Reminder, of course, is that last year in St. Louis County, nearly 2,000 people lost their lives to smoking. Nearly 800 kids began smoking regularly every day last year in St. Louis County. You can't help those 2,000. They're going to continue for many years to come. But the most addictive drug on the face of the earth is something you can't control. You can help kids grow up a little bit, until their frontal lobes get to a developmental point where they can refuse nicotine on their own. For now, we need your help. We need your courage. We need your real foresight in bringing this change about, not just for St. Louis, but leadership for all of Missouri. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you, Dr. Crane.
800 kids per day take up some-
800 kids per year, I'm sorry.
Per year, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Crane.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ginny Chadwick, followed by David Skare.
Hi, my name is Ginny Chadwick, and I spoke before the committee, but wanted to speak with you guys again. Columbia, Missouri was the first place to adopt Tobacco 21, and it did so in 2014. And at the time, the federal FDA ruling hadn't come down to include e-cigarettes as a tobacco product. They have done that, but we went ahead and included it, as all other cities had done. Now, we have a clear understanding that e-cigarettes are not a cessation product. We listen to the economic argument. What we know is that tobacco products cost Missouri health care over $3 million a year. It is hard to make up the revenue of that cost in health care. We also know that freedom doesn't come from a life of addiction, and we want to prevent our youth from obtaining an addictive product. So 80% of our youth obtain tobacco products from their peers, the 18- or 19-year-old. And those 18- or 19-year-olds are in the high school. And so by moving the age up, you're moving the source out of the high school. And so less youth will start obtaining tobacco products. And when they obtain tobacco products, e-cigarettes are a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginny.
Next speaker is David Skare, followed by Matt Menke.
My name is David Skare. I've been here before. In my 30 years of active work for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, I've been in many leadership roles and supervisory roles. You are all well-respected leaders. You've been elected, and you're very respected for your place in this community. I'd like to state a few facts by the U.S. Census Bureau. In 1950, the highest population in St. Louis was 860,000 people. It has declined to 319,000 in 2010. In that time, the population of the county went from 406,000 to 1 million in 2000, and now it has declined to 998,000. There's a reason why communities suffer and start to decline. And that is from infrastructure that is not controlled. When there's too much development, people want to migrate away. These people with these vapor products have a very good point. But the congestion and the air pollution in this city alone is probably worse than all of these vapor products put together, these people inhaling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Next speaker is Matt Menke, followed by Stacy Relaford.
Good evening, my name is Matt Menke. I've had the honor to operate two vape shops in the St. Louis County over the last four years. With these businesses, we've been able to supply jobs to people in need. As well, more importantly, we have been able to convert people's lives by providing them an alternative to smoking traditional cigarettes. Raising the age restriction from age 18 to 21 only prohibits young adults from accessing a new alternative to smoking cigarettes. We would appreciate your thoughts to reconsider the T-21 bill. Please allow the citizens of your community aged 18 to 21 to make their own life decisions. With the passing of this bill, you will not only eliminate the jobs of the 18 and 20 through 21-year-olds we currently employ, but also make these great products less accessible to those who are in need and want to make a change in their life. I had to make a change in my, to quit smoking in my life six years ago, when my son was diagnosed with cystic fibrosis, a terminal lung disease, a disease that he does not have the option of having a cure to at this time. Please do not take away our rights to have these options of vapor products available to help us quit smoking for the people of the age 18 to 21. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt.
Next speaker is Stacy Relaford, followed by Bob Spelmeier.
Good evening, I'm Stacy Relaford, and I live at 322 Caroline in Kirkwood, Missouri. And I'm also the Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I come here tonight to encourage you to vote yes on Council Bill 199. And you may know, a third of all cancer deaths are tobacco-related. And nationally, 95% of adult smokers start before the age of 21. This legislation is an important strategy that complements and builds on proven tobacco control legislation that helps smokers quit and prevents youth initiation. Raising the tobacco sale age will have a substantial positive impact on public health. I'd like to thank Councilman Page for his leadership on this issue and encourage you to vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Next speaker is Bob Spelmeier. Mr. Spelmeier? Then we will go to Colin Urson, followed by A.J. Mall.
Thank you, councilpeople. I would like to start off by stating the simple fact that vaping is 95% safer than traditional cigarettes. This is a fact. This is not a talking point. This is not something that's up for debate. This is a fact. It was proven by the Royal College of Physicians, a group of 32,000 doctors in the UK, who have dedicated their lives to improving the practice of medicine and public health. To argue this point is the same as denying that smoking causes cancer. The tests have been done, the science is in, and vaping is 95% safer. To regulate vaping as a tobacco product is like comparing a firecracker to a nuclear weapon. Yes, both have their perceived danger, but one can blow up the whole city, and the other can barely dent cement. Treating them as the same is not only completely insane, but it's also a disservice to this community. Right now, we have hundreds, if not thousands, of people in this community struggling to get off of cigarettes. Hard-working Americans who want nothing more than to kick a bad habit. And that has killed over a billion people this century. Thank you.
Next speaker is A.J. Mall, followed by John Mullins.
Good evening, council. Good to be back again. As I look around the room, and I hear everybody testifying, the people that are totally for Tobacco 21, they're all professional paid lobbyists. I haven't seen one of your constituents that actually has spoken up. They're paid to be here. I'm not paid to be here. Missouri Smoke Free is a non-for-profit. I don't take a dime. By the way, the president of Brave, she couldn't make it here, Jennifer Suits, she was here last week. She wanted to officially endorse Amy Polkner for District 2 seat, just so you know. And just look at your constituents. They said they quit smoking. It's the best cessation device anybody's ever seen. And because I'm not a retailer or manufacturer, under the law, I can tell you that 10 million people have quit smoking. So don't restrict this to our young adults, 18, 19, and 20, that could use those products to quit smoking. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker is John Mullins. Then we'll go to Philip Abraham, followed by Karen Angler.
Thank you, councilmembers. I just want to thank you again.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Philip Abraham. I'm a pediatrician. I'm not a lobbyist. I have a lot of student loans to pay to account for that. But I just wanted to support this policy, Tobacco 21. I came before you as a pediatrician, and now, really, I'm just coming forth as a citizen of U.City, because I care about my community, and I know all of you guys truly as well. You've lived in a generation where the fat of tobacco products grew, and consequently, we now suffer from the consequences of those novelty products back then. I didn't have the luxury, and right now, we treat patients, well, back in med school, when I treated adults, yes, we treated patients who now suffer the problems of tobacco. Now, with this policy, 850,000 are covered all throughout Missouri. And if this passes in St. Louis County, nearly 2 million, or a third of the state, will be covered. Please take the time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Angler, followed by Kathy Hutton.
Good evening, councilmembers. I want to thank you for having us here again to talk about Tobacco 21. I also want to thank Councilman Page for his support and leadership with this very important prevention policy. You know, we've talked about a lot of things tonight, but I think it's important to remember that in 190 cities, and in two full states, we've passed Tobacco 21 policies, and they have all included vapor and e-cigarettes, every single one. We're not looking to do anything different here. We're looking to follow model policy, and do it right, and lead the way for St. Louis County and the surrounding areas. This is a prevention policy. If we keep our kids from ever starting, they won't need to quit. That's what this is about, preventing addiction, preventing harm. I know that kids break the rules. I have three teenagers. I know it really well. It doesn't mean I don't set rules, though. It doesn't mean I don't set boundaries. It also means in things like, you know, if a fire starts, I sure want the firefighters around. So Tobacco 21, I want a good policy in place. Thank you for your time and your support and your yes vote tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Hutton, followed by Gentry Matthews.
Thank you, councilmembers. I am here, and I do oppose the Tobacco 21. I think it should disclude vaping products. I do have a vape shop, and I have seen miracles happen. I have seen people that come in hacking and coughing, and one of my regular customers started out on an oxygen tank and is no longer on an oxygen tank. As you can see, as the previous lady had just said, she sets rules, yet kids, like myself, when I was younger, I started smoking at the age of 13. By the time you turn 18 years old, you are considered an adult, and you're probably already addicted anyway. So if you have this alternative to help you get away from smoking, I think it's a wonderful thing. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gentry Matthews, followed by Graham Sampson.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak today. My name is Gentry Matthews. I'm 22 years old. I am a college student, a business owner, and most importantly, a vapor. I started smoking cigarettes at the age of 15, regardless of the law. I started vaping at 18 years old and have not touched a cigarette since then. I have seen my health improve dramatically, and, I apologize. I've seen my health improve dramatically, and I don't know that I would be where I'm at without vapor products. Vaping has been proven to be 95% safer by the Royal College of Physicians, and I am in support of T-21. However, I think that an amendment should be made for people between the age of 18 and 21 to make the decision to choose vapor products to better their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Next speaker is Graham Sampson, followed by Charles Peterson.
Hi, my name is Graham Sampson. I work in the vapor industry, I have for the last three years. And along with myself, I've seen it save countless lives. I would probably still be smoking cigarettes if I hadn't started vaping. The science is there, showing that it is safer than cigarettes. It is not the same as smoking. And because the FDA calls it a tobacco product, it's now classified as a tobacco product. There needs to be more research in, within the U.S. government, because we're getting all of our information from foreign governments right now. It's absurd what people are doing and talking about, as far as the vapor industry goes. They're saying that it's the same as cigarettes, it's worse than cigarettes, it is 95% safer. I couldn't say enough about the benefits of vapor products, and I'm a really bad public speaker, so, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Charles Peterson, followed by Denise Menkowski.
My name is Charles Peterson, and I came here today to support T-21 with the exclusion of vapor products. Vapor products have helped me and my mother quit smoking, and I've been smoke-free for about a year and a half now. I'm very proud of that, and I'm going to stick to that. But my grandfather never smoked a day in his life, and he died from emphysema from second-hand cigarette smoke. So I am all about eliminating tobacco products. But in the end, to keep something in your mind, the more illegal you make something, the cooler it is going to be for these teens in their heads to have them. Thank you. Thank you.
Denise Menkowski, followed by April Abishan.
Good evening, councilmembers. I apologize in advance, I forgot my reading glasses at home.
Want to use these?
Thank you. All right. In Columbia, Missouri, it's been over a year and half and a half since Tobacco Twenty-One was passed, and as reported in the Columbia Tribune, Columbia Tribune on December twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, the police have issued zero citations. Bill 199 is a feel-good law that only misinforms the public and tries to equate vapor products with deadly cigarettes. The Tobacco Twenty-One legislation Columbia Councilwoman Jenny Chadwick introduced was so unpopular that her seat was recalled by the residents, but she didn't care because she resigned, and is now actively lobbying on Tobacco Twenty-One's behalf. Was Councilman Page, who is also in the medical field, offered a lobbying job? In Kansas City, one of the councilmen said Tobacco Twenty-One was moved through so quick he didn't have time to give it any thought. He was told this would save the children, but later remarked that he thinks Big Pharma is behind Tobacco Twenty-One. Thank you.
Thank you.
April Abishan will be followed by Eli Boner.
Hi, my name's April Abishan. As you guys learned last year, or last week, I'm sorry, that I started smoking at thirteen when the legal limit was eighteen. You have access to it. Heroin's illegal, but millions of people die from heroin constantly. The fact of raising the age to twenty-one for vapor products isn't going to do anything positive. You've heard many stories and still have more to hear from people that have quit with vapor products. It doesn't matter if the FDA approves that as a cessation method. I don't approve them wanting to give my child oxycodone either. But you're hearing from people all night that is telling you that it's working for them. The Missouri Legislature correctly separated vapor products from being regulated as tobacco in two thousand and fourteen. They correctly recognized that a product doesn't contain nicotine, it cannot be classified as a vapor product.
That's one minute, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Eli Boner, followed by Martin Pyon.
Hi, my name is Eli Boner, and I am not a professional lobbyist. I would like to thank the St. Louis County Council for allowing me to speak in support of Tobacco Twenty-One tonight. I'm here supporting Tobacco Twenty-One because I see the effects of tobacco on our youth every day in my life, from with my friends, when they're out at a movie and they have to go take a smoke break because they are so addicted to nicotine that they just can't stop smoking. They are there with me every day, and they have to leave the friend group just because of their addiction. Vaping isn't going to help that either. I'm also in support of Tobacco Twenty-One because I work at a store where I have to sell cigarettes to kids my age. Sometimes I have to think about how their lives would be different if they weren't smoking. How much longer would they live? How much more time would they have with their friends and their family? I'm here because I care about if my generation and the next generation of Americans have easy access to a product that will slowly kill them. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli.
Next speaker is Martin Pyon, followed by Greta Todd.
My name is Martin Pyon, president of Missouri Gas, and I don't get paid for that. Honorable councilmembers and county executive Steve Stenger, I applaud Councilmember Sam Page for introducing Bill Number 199 to raise the legal age for purchasing tobacco and vaping products to twenty-one. I'm also delighted that it has broad bipartisan council support, and I hope that includes my councilmember Hazel Irby. Any constructive effort to discourage the use of these products is important for the health and safety, not only of the potential user, but also of exposed employees. Many comments last week, this week, from vaping supporters ask for those products to be exempted on the grounds they help smokers quit. The way they're being marketed tells a different story. This is a 2013 Blue e-cigarette ad featuring actress and model Jenny McCarthy with the tagline, "Freedom to Have a Cigarette Without the Guilt." Compare that to this nineteen-eighties ad for Virginia Slims with the tagline, "You've Come a Long Way, Baby," emphasizing women's lips. Passing this bill shows that public health and welfare have come a long way in St. Louis County. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Next speaker is Greta Todd, followed by Bill Hanigan.
Hi, my name is Greta Todd, and I'm a constituent who lives at 621 Simmons Avenue in Kirkwood. First of all, I would like to urge you to please increase the tobacco sale age to twenty-one. I'm first and foremost a mom of a daughter who is a sophomore at Kirkwood High School. But in my free time from that job, I'm also director of community affairs at St. Louis Children's Hospital, and I take health programming out to underserved children in our region. I see every day how children and families struggle to achieve optimum health, and cigarettes and tobacco only complicate matters for them. So I would urge you to increase the tobacco sale age to twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Greta.
Next speaker is Bill Hanigan, followed by Matt Kepler.
I would urge the council to respect the freedom of eighteen-year-olds who are full adults under the law. Eighteen-year-olds can be drafted into battle, they can enter into contracts, they can vote, they can marry, they can be imprisoned for their misdeeds, they can even be executed for their misdeeds. They are full adults, and I don't think you should take people who are eighteen, nineteen, and twenty and say, "You can't have freedom." But people who are twenty-one, thirty, thirty-five, you can have freedom. I don't believe in that discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next speaker is Matt Kepler, followed by Mark Beckert or Bochert.
Hello again, and thank you for the opportunity to testify over these three weeks. We're in support, I'm Matt Kepler, by the way, I'm with the March of Dimes, I'm also a resident of Kirkwood and a father of two children. And these are the reasons that bring me here in front of you for the last several weeks to advocate for the passage of Tobacco Twenty-One. We've provided you with lots of statistics specific to the county about the numbers of mothers that are pregnant who have reported smoking throughout the pregnancy. We're also concerned about the impact that that has on the children, the family unit as a whole, and those are the reasons that we've really come before you today. We know that the data does not support nor show at this time that vaping is a safe alternative. And so I think at this point, the safest vantage point that we would urge you to continue to do like the other one-hundred-and-ninety-plus municipalities is to include vaping in with this provision. So I thank you very much, and we ask you to support this Bill Number 199 today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt.
Mark Beckert or Bochert, followed by Roger Peterson.
Hello, thank you for having us. I do want to say I am in support for T21, but with the exclusion of vapor products. I've seen quite a few people come in with oxygen tanks, not being able to breathe, shortness of breath. I've had people who have come in smoking four or five packs a day for the last thirty, forty years, completely quit smoking with vapor products. They don't normally have that energy whenever they're smoking. You can tell after a few weeks of moving from vaping or moving to vaping from smoking that there's a big change in their attitude, there's a big change in their energy, there's a huge change in how much they're actually able to get up and do. I've seen people, as previously mentioned, with oxygen tanks who no longer need them, down to a bottle of e-liquid like every week or so compared to two, three packs of cigarettes a day. One bottle of e-liquid is equivalent to about four-and-a-half packs of cigarettes, nicotine-wise. It's about ninety milligrams of nicotine in a three-milligram bottle, thirty mil.
That's one minute, Mr. Chair.
Anyways, please say no to T21. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Next speaker is Roger Peterson, followed by Bob Mahachek, and if Mr. Mahachek isn't here, it will be Justin Hutton.
Good evening to the board. My name is Roger Peterson. I represent the Missouri Chapter of Saffana, the Smoke-Free Alternative Trade Association. I'm a retired biochemist. While I fully support your efforts to increase the smoking of tobacco to twenty-one, I do not agree that vaping should be included. I'm going to go on a different path than a lot of people have tonight. The FDA deemed all finished e-liquid products as being a tobacco item and therefore falling under their control because they contain nicotine. However, many e-liquids contain zero nicotine with no components being derived from tobacco. Even the nicotine may not be from tobacco, as synthetic nicotine is readily available. E-liquid is composed of three to four primary components: propylene glycol, glycerin, food-grade flavoring, and sometimes nicotine. The first three components, which are ninety-nine percent of e-liquid, can be purchased at any drug or grocery store regardless of age. Including vaping products and T21 ordinance will guarantee two outcomes: encourage teenagers to experiment and reduce local tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I think Mr. Mahachek left. So next speaker is Justin Hutton, followed by Roger Peterson.
We just did Roger. Or is there?
Oh. Then followed by Drew Fernandez.
Hello, I'm Justin Hutton. I'm nineteen years old, and I think vaping should be excluded from the T21 bill because there are still two-thirds of high scores that drink before they're twenty-one, and drinking causes car accidents and even alcohol poisoning. So I don't see why you can't let something that has saved lives, beneficial and available to the youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Next speaker is Drew Fernandez, followed by Justin Price.
Thank you for your time. I'm Drew Fernandez, I'm from Afton. I'm thirty-nine years old, and I have a son, and he is in the eighteen-to-twenty-one age range. And I busted him smoking, you know, so as a dad, father, I had to do what I had to do so I could get him off of that. And I introduced him to vaping, and he's been clean a year and a half right now. And why did I introduce him to vaping? It's because I haven't had an asthma attack in three years, and the last time that I used my Obiterol, it was two years ago, and I had to throw it away because it went bad on me. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Justin Price, followed by Greg Zirker.
Good evening, council. My name is Justin Price. I'm a vape shop owner in South County, Oakville. It's been about, we've been our fourth year coming this next year. It's been incredible. We've changed hundreds, if not thousands, of lives. It's very real. I invite any of you to come to my shop any day or any of the shops that these owners have and see the real difference, and that's simple. On a more personal side, I lost my brother about four years ago. He overdosed on methadone. He got it from a methadone clinic here in St. Louis County that you could walk into right now and they ask you two questions. Are you eighteen? And where do you hurt? He overdosed. They sent him with over a thousand milligrams of methadone, and you can be eighteen years old and go in there and get methadone. Why can you get help off of heroin and prescription pills, but you can't get help off of tobacco? And the biggest thing that I'd like to say is, I'm sure the chairman from T21 is telling you guys to be progressive, and you can be proud that you could be one of the one-hundred-and-ninety-first community to stand up against tobacco, but how about being the first county to stand up for vaping? And a lot of... Because that, that, that will make headlines. That will make headlines. And I'm serious, because we are changing lives every single day, guys. The first person I ever sold a vape to in my shop, they walked in and they were buying them for their kids because their kid had got them for them a year before, and she was on three blood pressure medications, and when she walked into my shop a year later, she was on one. He said he hadn't slept in thirty-five years. He snored like a bear, he couldn't sleep. A year later, he's sleeping like a baby, you know? And then they gave that gift to their kids and helped them to quit smoking. And it's real. It's very, very real. If the chairman of T21 thinks that nicotine is the most addictive substance in the world, I invite him to go down to that methadone clinic at eleven thousand St. Charles Rock Road. Thank you.
Final speaker signed up with Greg Zirker. I think he's not here. No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
There are no bills to be introduced.
Read that report.
Sir, sir.
Read the report.
You're going to be removed. Please, we'd like for you to stay, okay? Thanks for your comments, Justin. All right, move on to perfection of bills.
Bill Number Eight, introduced by Councilmember Omera.
Hold on to the order business. That'll be the order.
Bill Number Two-O-Two, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Omera.
I can take it up, move for perfection of Bill Number Two-O-Two. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have motion carries, Bill Number Two-O-Two is perfected.
Bill Number Two-O-Three, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Omera.
I can take it up, move for perfection of Bill Number Two-O-Three. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have motion carries, Bill Number Two-O-Three is perfected.
Bill Number Two-O-Four, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Omera.
I can take it up, move for perfection of Bill Number Two-O-Four. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have motion carries, Bill Number Two-O-Four is perfected.
Bill Number Two-O-Five, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill Number Two-O-Five. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have motion carries, Bill Number Two-O-Five is perfected.
Bill Number Two-O-Six, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I'd like to move to perfect Bill Number Two-O-Six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have motion carries, Bill Number Two-O-Six is perfected.
Bill Number Two-O-Seven, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I'd like to move also to perfect Bill Number Two-O-Seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have motion carries, Bill Number Two-O-Seven is perfected. Move to final passage of bills.
Bill Number One-Sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold Bill Number One-Sixteen.
Go order.
Bill Number One-Eighty, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to hold Bill Number One-Eighty.
Go order.
Bill Number One-Ninety-four, introduced by Councilmember Omera.
Take it up, move for final pass, Bill Number One-Ninety-four. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Irby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Omera.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number One-Ninety-four, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number One-Ninety-four is finally passed.
Bill Number One-Ninety-five, introduced by Councilmember Omera.
I can take it up, move for final pass, Bill Number One-Ninety-five. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Irby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Omera.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number One-Ninety-five, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number One-Ninety-five is finally passed.
Bill Number One-Ninety-six, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill One-Ninety-six.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Irby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Omera.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number One-Ninety-six, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number One-Ninety-six is finally passed.
Bill Number One-Ninety-seven, introduced by Councilmember Irby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number One-Ninety-seven. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Irby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Omera.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number One-Ninety-seven, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number One-Ninety-seven is finally passed.
Bill Number One-Ninety-eight, introduced by Councilmember Omera.
I can take it up, move for final pass, Bill Number One-Ninety-eight. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Irby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Omera.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.